I call a meeting to order.
Jackson County Commission Work Session February 12th, 2018. Mr. Manning, would you call real court place?
District one, Mr. Guppy. District two, Mr. Google.
Present.
District three, Ms. Gilbert.
Present.
District four, Mr. Seuss.
Present.
Mr. Thompson, present.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Mr. Thompson, would you be the official court place?
Father, Lord, we thank you for this day. Once again, Lord, we thank you for all your blessings on us. Lord, we thank you for this beautiful county that we live in. Lord, we thank you for our leaders that are gathered here today. We just pray that you give them wisdom and understanding in this meeting. Will watch over us, guide us, or help us to remember those that are less fortunate than us. In these proceedings, Lord, we just pray that your will be done. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Ms. Gilbert, would you let us in the plate?
Ladies and gentlemen, we are the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
First thing we have is the incredible agenda for today's work session. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Have motion and second. All in place to play out?
Yes.
All opposed, say no. The first, the next thing that we have is public comment from citizen. And the first name that we have on signing sheet is Mr. Harold Prince.
That's me. My name's Harold Prince. For the ones that don't know me, I live in Sarah Lane subdivision in Stevenson. Lived there for forty years. And it's in the county. County road runs in front of our house and everything. But the mayor, his brother lives over there. So he come over and put a speed hump in front of his house. Mr. Campbell did not give him permission. The county commissioner did not give him permission. And we'd like them to remove that speed hump. At their cost, they installed it. There's no other speed humps in Stevenson in any subdivision whatsoever. That's the only one. And it all comes because somebody run over one of her cats. Now, y'all know an animal'll dart out in front of an automobile where it be a cat or a dog. And you can't help it sometimes. And that's what all of this is stemmed from. And we would like to get that speed hump removed.
At their expense.
Yeah, at cities. They're the ones that put it in, they ought to be the ones to remove it, not at the county's expense.
Some of that subdivision's in the city, right?
Well, the first two houses when we lived there was in the city. Rest of it was in the county. Now, some of these people, and I told I couldn't speak on this, just addressed the speed hump. So I might need to stop right there. But now, that's the way it was when we lived in there. First two houses in the city, rest is in the county.
Thank you, sir. Thank y'all. Ms. Anne Prince, would you like to speak?
He pretty well covered it, except that this is the petition for the speed humps, and I would like for you to view it.
There's forty-four houses over there.
Some of those names are illegal. They are in the county. Some of them have been removed when they found out what it was for. And it is causing war in our neighborhood, which we've never... We have had to only use our protective rights one time when someone tried to pull a trailer into our subdivision, and we had to stop it. But we're ready to use them again. But we want it removed by the expense of the one who installed it. We have one car, a Lincoln, that will not go over. And our disabled daughter drives it. And he covered the rest.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Campbell, have you contacted the City of Stevenson Concerned?
Yes.
That's what we've brought in here at first.
Is this a dead end road, or is it?
No.
What county number is it, Jonathan?
It's Sarah Lane subdivision.
But it doesn't have another county number?
It's not a county road number. It's identified by road lanes. There's several roads in that subdivision that are under county limits.
How long do y'all say you lived there?
About forty, forty-one years.
Forty-one years. We bought it in...
Seventy-eight.
We moved in in seventy-eight with an option to buy. And we bought it in seventy-nine.
Yeah, about forty years. We lived there forty years.
And Jonathan, what's the normal procedure for putting one in? What would they normally do?
We typically do not recommend installation of speed humps. And this conversation came up, came up about a year or so ago, maybe?
It has been going on for a year, a longer.
Our office is contacted by someone requesting speed humps, if I'm not mistaken, in that area. And we, it was explained that we follow the U T C D manual, which is the national standard that we follow for traffic control devices, in which that recommendation that we follow in that manual explains the implications of a speed hump on a residential place, or a county road, or any application that's typical of what we deal with. So if there is not mostly pedestrian traffic, such as in the parking lot, or something outside a road network type application, then speed humps are not typically recommended for several reasons. They impede rescue vehicles or park response type vehicles. Unless they're full lane width, you encounter things such as motorists going around speed humps, which can cause more harm. And then also, it's typically very noisy. So vehicles encountering the speed hump, often there's a noise issue that's created from the hump. And so it's for those reasons that it's not consistent with the U T C D manual for roadway applications.
Do you know when they install?
No.
Do y'all have a date?
Do what?
The date it was installed?
When was it? Was it last year? Was it wait before?
No, let's see. It has probably been there about...
Two weeks. About two weeks?
No, it's been longer than that. I'm saying roughly a month. This has been going on for a month. The situation did get worse on Saturday. On Saturday, they brought a crane into the subdivision and dropped a boulder beside of the speed hump as big as that type. Not a rock, a boulder. And it's on the side of the...
To keep people from going around it.
To keep people from avoiding, going over the speed hump. The boulder is now...
Is the boulder on the county road?
No, it's on the easement for the city.
It's on the easement for the city. They have an easement up to the water meter, but it's directly in front of the brother's house beside of the speed hump. And this was dropped Saturday.
People was going around the speed hump. Right. And they...
Well, let us do a... Let us do a little bit of research. We will make contact with the City of Stevenson Concerned, and we'll get back with you. Thank you all. Next person.
Somebody let us know.
Yes, yes. We will.
Do you have a contact number?
Thank you.
Thank everybody.
Thank y'all for coming by. Next person we have signing in to speak today would be Mr. Bill Payne.
My name is Bill Payne. I'm, I was on this board long, long time ago, maybe nine to ninety-three. I think I know most everybody in here, and you probably know who I am. I'm the chairman of the Bridgeport Utility Board. I've been on the board for almost thirty years. But I brought with me Jim Hughes, who's our general manager. I brought Barry Hughes, which I don't know if everybody knows. He's the city councilor.
What you said, good.
We, we're in the process, you know, of course, Google is coming in. Matter of fact, they moved in some office, construction trailers today, and we, that out of bid last week for the water and sewer, we hit for the development. We bought on Highway seventy-two, the utility company. We bought three acres of land, which was bought and paid for. And we're gonna build us a new office building down there. It's got water, twelve-inch water lines, it's got sewer lines, it's got natural gas lines, it's got three-phase power, right on Highway seventy-two. It's almost proximity between High West and Bridgeport Stevenson, you know. What we propose to do is build an office there. Matter of fact, we met with architect last Friday from Birmingham, and he's in the process of drawing up a building for us. You know, we all gave him our things that we might want, you know, and all. And I have talked to, I've talked to Mr. Arnold and Mike, and I guess everybody here except the attorney, and gentleman on the end there. What we propose to do is, of course, from Stevenson to Bridgeport and counting the Coles, and from Flat Rock to Bryant, approximately half the county population is there, you know. And so what we propose to do is, is offer the revenue commissioner and maybe someone else, provide them, when we build our building, they have their own private entrance, you know. They wouldn't have to go through the utility office. And we're not gonna build a lean-to. We're gonna build a nice building. What we propose to do, and I have authorization from the other board members that are not here, to offer you space in our building. You have your own private entrance, your own private meeting, whatever you need. That's what we're here for, see, first of all, I think you're interested in it, and see what Mr. Arnold and other people might, what they might need in there, you know. And like, you know, y'all have seen the movie The Godfather, we're gonna make you an offer that you can't refuse, you know. So that's what I'm here for. And again, I have talked to everybody, all the commissioners. So I just wanna get your idea of what... You have any questions, ask me, you know. I don't think I've had any negative comments about it so far. So that's what I'm here for, just try to get your, you'll say it, won't you?
Yeah, I think you do a good job.
Very. Y'all have any questions for me?
I have questions for the revenue commissioner.
That's the first item on there in discussion for, for the commission, satellite office for the revenue office of Bridgeport Utilities.
He, Bill approached me, actually, we talked, he asked me about this a year or so ago, maybe a couple of years. We did. Except maybe one day in the picture. He told me, just a week or two ago, he contacted me, said he's gonna build this building. And I don't think it's a bad idea. I'm, I think we, that's the reason I told them they ought to come and us talk about it, because I think we need to think about everything in the hall. And I was telling Mr. Payne a while ago that you have to think too, the majority of the people that come, or a lot of people that come to get their tags, if their driver's license has expired, then they gotta run across the hall and renew their driver's license and come back and get their tags. So that would involve the bigger too, you know, involve probate just too. So, you know, if it's just a place for people to renew, I mean, we're, every year, you know, we're making advancements on our renewal process, and, you know, that's gonna be a thing of the past. People's not gonna come to an office to renew anymore. So, but if it was a place where we could actually do titles and things like that, you know, it might be a need. And I'm not saying there is or ain't, but I, you know, I'd be for it if we looked and there's a need, there's enough people that would use it.
Well, like I say, you know, you got Bridgeport with the, I think with Second Orange Town in the county, Stevenson.
You got about a third of the, about a third of the population up there.
That was it.
Yeah, yeah. Scottsboro and the rest of the county makes up a third, and then Bridgeport, Stevenson, that area. But I look at the numbers, it's about a third of the population up there.
And I did bring a little diagram about where it is, unless y'all know where it is. Okay, this is, let's see. Here's Highway seventy-two, going Bridgeport, going Stevenson, coming from Bridgeport. There's a, there's two turn-ins, one here and one here. Matter of fact, the office gentleman that owns all this land out here, he's started eight thousand square foot on this end down here where our funky is. Eight thousand square foot climate control storage. Matter of fact, the port, they're gonna put the, the slab tomorrow. Now here's, this is a closer-up view of where we own. This is the same as coming in right here. We own three acres right here. It orders two different roads. So if y'all wanna look at that, it'd be fine.
So that's between Bridgeport and Stevenson?
It is. It's approximately halfway, I guess. It's in Bridgeport city limits, but our city limits don't go too far down past where we are. I don't know if y'all are familiar. Like I say, we have all the infrastructure already there. We met, again, we met with the architect last Friday after our bid opening. He's drawn us up some plans. It's not like we're gonna ask a fortune for it to be. Again, I have talked to all the members. Well, I don't think I've talked to Mr. Ben more.
Yeah, well, I've talked to him. That's something that I think would be a good thing, like Mr. Arnold said, you know, it'd launch some more discussions.
The problem, the only problem I see is Eric fixing, just put this building on the ground. So I don't know how we could commit to it now. The only thing I could think is, is if you guys would be willing to go ahead and set a place aside, or put a room in it. But I just don't see how me or the commission could commit to it right now. For one thing, it's not budgeted right now, and we'd have to budget it. Even though we're just talking about a couple of employees, we'd still have to budget a couple of employees.
Cause I don't know, in your office work, but would you have to, would you have to hire anybody else?
Yeah, we're already, because Mr. Bill, we're already short.
Are you?
You know, we had, right before Ron retired and I ran for office, we had thirty employees. Now we got twenty. So we're already cut back everywhere we could possibly cut back. So I can't pull more employees out here to send up there, even though in the future it might also, you know, it might, but I don't know that, so.
But if you got a third of the county where you're located, I, not that smart, but wouldn't it be feasible to maybe move one or two up there, you know? Or you're not, I'm not saying...
Yeah, the problem is, we don't have people to cover vacation days, and where people have gone to lunch, and stuff. We're pretty much bare minimum at some of the desks and stuff.
Some of the people in Port House are cross-trained, 'cause some can go from happy over there if need be in emergency situations.
We've done everything we could to try to round our budget.
There's some good things that we've done, this issue, you know, we switched to a new software company. And because of that, we'll start cross-training, so our tag, tag office and our real estate office, they should be, so I can, I could actually send a couple of people up there, maybe in the future, if we happen, that we'd do everything. They could do car tags, real estate, anything like that.
I think it'd be a good opportunity, well, of course, by satellite deals you're talking about, but you know, just like Jeff said, it's definitely gonna be pertaining to what him and probably Judge had to say a whole lot up there.
Let me, let me just make one quick comment, Jeff. I didn't sign in, but I hadn't planned on signing. But we are probably gonna build onto this building a space, maybe two spaces, just for the future. We wanna, we wanna have a space available if somebody wants to come in and put a business in or an office in. We've got something to offer the community without them having to, you know, go out and buy land and build it. We want something nice for them to be able to move into, just as, just as a community benefit, so. That wouldn't be out of the question, what you're saying.
Yeah, I think that would be, in my mind, I would, if y'all, I don't know how we could commit to it now. I could commit to it, at least the county commission committed to funding.
I think the first thing we need to do is Mr. Arnold and Mr. Manning get together and see what we would actually need up there, and what kind of dollar amount that that would, you know, obligation that would take from the county, and then have this on the work session again in pretty near the future.
That's the reason I asked him. He was calling me, we're back and forth on the phone, and I asked him to maybe just come to work session. You gotta start somewhere.
I did not mean to leave out Mr. Manning. I did not realize the connection, well, I probably should have, the license and the, but like Jim said, you know, whether, whether y'all commit to it or not, we're probably gonna go ahead and build, and then have, like I said, their own private entrance, you know. They wouldn't have to come through the utility office and, and, you know, have their own private entrance, their own bathroom, meeting room, kitchen, you know, facilities, you know. Get stuff for store. Get a separate front.
The main thing is, the tax collector needs a back door.
Well, we, yeah, we gotta have a back door.
You and I discussed this, what, two weeks ago? And you were saying that there was another office, that something, if something were to come up while they were in the process of it, is it like when they purchase property or something like that, that they have to go to another office, then come back?
Yeah, that's right. We're talking about the car tag, but like on the real estate office, if they, somebody came there to, they just bought property and is gonna assess it, well, then where, or they recorded the deed. All right, so if they're gonna record the deed, then Mr. Manning's gonna send them over to my office to get a value. They're gonna give them a value, send them back over to record the deed, and then they're gonna come back to my office and assess it. So really, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to join myself to him, by no means.
Well, I mean, we all need both up there. Well, that would be fine. I hadn't, my, I guess, my, I didn't even think about it, you know, the connection. That'd tick them to death, you know, if it...
What do you think?
Hey, listen, I'm, I'm for whatever we can do to, to, to help our citizens. And I think it's a wonderful idea. Like Jeff said, I, we would need, I need to catch my employees up here, and then, like you said, we would need probably two. I mean, you couldn't, couldn't have just one.
I talked to several other counties, and that's what they told me, any satellite office, you need at least, at least two.
Yeah, that's just like today, I had one that was scheduled to be off on vacation this week, which is fine, and then one of them ended up with a sick child, so we've been short today, which is fine, it's no problem, we made it happen, but if I had one of them gone, we're gonna have problems when we go to lunch, you know. It's, you know, it's one of those things you gotta work at, but it's one of those things that's certainly just workable. Just like Jeff said, I think, you know, if we did it, I think we would need to, I think we'd need to do pretty much everything outside of the probate court part. I don't think we could split that up. I don't see how we could. I guess it's possible, but we would need to renew driver's license, and I believe be able to at least search and give deeds and record deeds, and, I mean, if you want, if you're doing it for a truth and convenience, you certainly wanna do that.
That would tick them in, yeah.
So if this, if this thing happened, you're talking about four additional employees in both offices, right?
I think, I think, I think that's...
I would probably need two, yeah, I'd say.
Because you get into the same...
Keeping in mind, mine's a pro-rated budget, so you're not talking about a big cost for my two employees, not that much, but, of course, big savings.
Mine are not, but it's, it's the same thing. I mean, I can't, I can't use this, they can't use mine, 'cause mine are accountable to me at my barn, and he is accountable to him in his barn. So you couldn't just get one from each, because my money's mine, and my money has to be accounted for. I take that back, please. My money has to be accounted for and dispersed to everybody, just like Jeff says, accounted for and dispersed to everybody, so. It could work under my barn.
Would you have to have a separate office, probably, petition?
I don't, I don't think that's, I don't think that would be necessary. Yeah, I don't, I think, I think one space would be fine. I just, we would just need every part of that space, so that we would, we can't use a common cash register, you know what I'm saying?
Right, I understand, yeah.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't think...
I don't see that as a problem.
No, I don't, I don't think that'd be...
And again, you know, we're, we're not gonna build a lean-to, you know. We're gonna build a nice, nice building.
If, if, I mean, I can tell you, it sounds like I'm just passing the buck, I'm all for it. Just gotta figure out how to make it happen, you know, and, and to, to make it happen worthwhile, make it stay there.
Okay, I'm not an architect, man, by no means, but what, what kinda square footage are we talking about?
I mean, I don't know, Jeff.
We don't need much, just two desks.
It's gonna be...
Two desks or a counter with two people.
Do you think, I don't even know how much, a thou, the first house I ever lived in was nine hundred and sixty square feet. But, you know, I'm just roughly thinking, would a thousand square feet be enough for a boat and a bathroom, maybe?
A bit more than that.
I don't think so.
I think that'd be...
We would need a place to lock, probably lock money up.
I would, yeah, I would, I would like to mention that, I think, as you're thinking. I like the idea of a counter and maybe some type of, sort of barrier to keep, you know, like you have the service stations, 'cause, I mean, some things, if we take in a lot of money on boat stickers and stuff, I mean, we could end up with a lot of cash. And I'm sure that Jeff does too, and there's certain, certainly, I know it's right beside you guys, but you certainly got a safety aspect there.
Well, with, with y'all going ahead and putting two additional offices in there, it kinda gives us some time to talk about this more and see if this is a doable thing.
It does, except, well, we're not trying to put you on a timeframe, but, you know, our architect, he, we met him last Friday, and he's sitting down there at the pit, you know, drawing and all that, and I said, well, how long's it gonna take you? About a month? He's, I had something for next week, you know, to look at, you know.
Maybe he could just include some, you know, some vacant space in there?
That's what, well, like Jim said, that's what we propose to do, you know. That's, to me, our downtown, 'cause I've been there all my life, and, but most, like most small towns, our downtown, the full lane bypasses us and everything's moving to the full lane, you know. I remember back when I was growing up, our downtown was so busy on Saturday, you couldn't get a parking spot. Now, you know, there's no traffic, you know. And then finally moved out to seventy-two, where my dad had a store, and now it's moving on out, you know.
Mr. Bill, if I was coming down Flat Rock, coming down seventeen, how far from, if I took a right and went to where y'all are building it, took a left and went to Scottsboro, is that not close to the same?
Four miles from...
Four miles to where y'all think about building it. So how far is it to come down here?
It's twenty-six. Stevenson, it's twenty-two miles.
It's twenty-six from the hospital to hospital. That's where we used to be, I'm working from twenty-six from Old Jackson to Scottsboro.
But if you're at Bryant, you know, on up...
Drop off the upper end from that side?
You could drop off at South Pittsburgh and come through that way, and it's a lot quicker, you know.
Let me say, one of the thing I'll shut up, it's, you know, we've gotta design it, approve it, fund it, and then we have to publicly bid it, and, and then construct it. So, you know, it's not gonna happen overnight.
Y'all got some talent there anyway.
Yeah.
Well, that does, that's, that gives us some time to see if this thing can get done. Like, like you said, this is, we're in the middle of a budget year. This wasn't budgeted, so you're probably talking six months' construction from now till it's finished.
I would think...
Oh, yeah, longer than that to finish.
But again, you know, it's not like, it's not like we have to put the utilities in. They're already there. Another one's, you know, we've got twelve-inch water line down seventy-two, what is it, six-inch gas line? Natural gas, and of course, the sewer. And like I say, Google's coming in, and I don't know what's gonna follow them, usually a lot of stuff, you know.
We appreciate y'all coming down and sharing this information with us, and we will do some more research on it, and Jeff and Judge Manning can sorta toy with the numbers of possible customers and things like that, but it would probably have to be done in the next budget year, if we did it. We don't have, we're just not budgeting for that right now.
I understand.
But seven months, you'll be into a new year.
Yeah.
I mean, we will, worthwhile.
Thank y'all, thank y'all.
Yes, we appreciate it.
Do you need assistance or anything? Appreciate y'all, give us opportunity.
I don't know if we do right now, but...
Okay. If there's any questions, before we leave, go ahead and ask them.
And my handy phone number, and I might be calling you.
That'd be fine, that'd be fine. Can't get me, get Jim, he's at the office there at the Bridgeport Utility Company. Thank y'all.
Thanks a lot, we appreciate it.
Appreciate it, thank y'all.
Love y'all. Good opportunity for it. Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item we have is a sheriff's office fingerprint scanner system. And we, Mr. Gomez is gonna explain this to us.
Commissioner, my name is Jerry Gomez, I'm the captain of the Jackson County jail. And we participate in the integrated automated fingerprint ID system. Each arrest comes in as fingerprinted. Now, their fingerprint is electronic. Now, this is the standard now throughout the country. And very briefly, each arrest is fingerprinted electronically and submitted electronically to the FBI database. Since the end of two thousand and sixteen, we have not had a contract with the people who have the state contract, their data works plus. They are responsible for maintaining and supporting, providing equipment at a cost supporting, providing equipment at a cost of the sheriff's office to, um, scan the fingerprints and submit them, the hardware, the software, everything that goes into fingerprinting is included in that. As I say, at the end of two thousand sixteen is the last time we had true support. DataWorks Plus, as a courtesy to the county, has been helping us limp along, keeping things going, uh, it's usable now, we've been using it and submitting it rather long. The problem is, the equipment that we have at the jail has reached the end of its serviceable life, uh, the camera, the printer, the, uh, uninterruptible power supply, the certified palm and tin printer scanner, which is a glass plate with a camera underneath that scans, actually scans the prints and then submits it to the software. So, what we're needing at the jail is this new, more, uh, updated equipment, so that the DataWorks Plus will maintain it and service it, and right now, they will service it at a tremendous cost, it's a hundred and eighty dollars per hour, it's a two-hour minimum if they had to come check it, check on, plus the drive time of the DataWorks Plus ignition, they could actually work with it. So what we're needing is a new contract, and get the contract current, the contract's twenty-five hundred dollars per year, it runs from January first to December thirty-first yearly. The contract has been expired since the end of two thousand sixteen, so in order to get the contract back reinstated, this twenty-five hundred dollar contract, DataWorks Plus is asking for a five hundred dollar reinstatement fee. So, to get the contract and reinstatement fee and the new camera that we need, and the printer, that will print the cards that was required, um, the universal, I mean, the uner- the uninterruptible power supply, and the palm printer, and if we turn in our old palm printer, if it's still working now, we'll get a five hundred dollar credit on that, and all this comes to seventeen thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars, but that would get us back current, and then it'd get us back under a contract with the service agreement and be able to get some support we need. Now, they can do a lot of things remotely, but right now, 'cause we're out of contract, we can't get that either, really, they're being at us courtesy now, doing that three or four times maybe during this fast time of being out from under a contract, but, yeah, that's what, that's what we need. Not only are we fingerprinting criminals and arrestees, we're fingerprinting, I was sitting over here just jiving down the ones that I could just think of, uh, we fingerprint for teachers, postal workers, security guards that are armed, foster parents, Medicaid workers who are sitting with the elderly and may be vulnerable, we fingerprint pharmacists, people who want firearms endorsements and are granted those, we fingerprint those people as well, so it's not just a jailhouse-type thing, this serves the community as well, so...
Could you go through that list again, please?
Um, teachers, postal workers, security guards, foster parents, Medicaid workers, pharmacists, and people who want firearms endorsements, they have their, uh, federal firearms license, or they wanna be able to modify a gun, they come to us for fingerprint.
So without a contract, we, we go under this hundred and eighty dollars an hour, what you said we did?
Yes, sir.
But if we go under a contract, they'll, they'll take care of it, without paying an hourly fee?
That's correct, and it's a two-hour minimum, plus the drive time for the ignition to get there, so that's, you're running into tremendous expense.
Contract ran out in two thousand sixteen, when was the contract?
December...
When, when did it start, was it a three-year, four-year, two-year?
Oh, it's only yearly, it runs from January first to December thirty-first each year.
Why was it allowed to run out?
Uh, well, it was already expired when I came to you back in July of last year to appeal to you for this, uh, equipment, so we're still in the same stagnant situation that we were in back in July, oh, really, January first of last year.
Who else, uh, has the same kinda stuff?
Well, as I say, DataWorks Plus for years has had the Alabama State contract, and there's the only thing that we can discover, back in July, I called many jails, and it's all, and within Alabama, it was all DataWorks Plus, and you can look on the website, and the, uh, at that time, but I looked at it, the contract was for Alabama for DataWorks Plus, you can research that.
I was reading the last one, 'cause I just, I just never liked to have one fee in, you know, I suppose.
I understand.
Going on.
So, if we, if we got a new contract, would the equipment that we have work?
The PC is still, would still be under a service contract, now that's still in its usable life at this point, the software and the hardware, I think, is still serviceable, it's not yet, uh, obsolete, but the camera, the printer, and, uh, the tin printer are now obsolete.
Bob, can you recall, um, in two thousand sixteen, where exactly those funds were coming from?
The, uh, twenty-five hundred dollar would have been under contract services in the jail, and, uh, that would list, as he admits, and I think that was an annual contract he is, in the role of each year, and it would have been twenty-five hundred dollars in the contract services portion.
Mr. Chairman, I, I apologize, I don't remember discussing it.
In July?
Yeah, July seventeenth, I believe, is that right?
But, uh... Do you have any, any totals on what you spent on maintenance and...
As I said, as a courtesy, they've been helping us, uh...
They were the ones that presented this right here, saying that the life was over with, basically, that's what it said, that works, and noted that your system has reached its end of life.
That is correct.
And my understanding is, they won't, you know, update the contract unless we get new equipment.
Well, you could update the contract, I imagine, but there would be a tremendous expense involved if you were to try to get it supported if something were breaking, gone wrong with it. I don't even know if they would service it, you know, you're right, I, I don't even know if they would come down and fix it, well, I know they will for a fee, but...
If, if this is something that we did know about in July, I don't know why we didn't include it in the jail budgets or...
I look back, we just discussed it, but there was nothing of...
It never got to the fore, did it?
No, it was just a discussion that...
I remember you being here, but I, I can't remember what we discussed, you know, I'm sure you got a paper, we discussed this.
That would have been right when the budget was...
Yeah, I suppose we was trying to get everything together.
That was, the seventeenth was a Monday, so it wouldn't have been a bridge or both your budget meeting.
Whatever it, whatever time it was in July.
Somebody I remember, something about, brought up about a printer, but, you know, but I don't know.
I think at that time, it was just, the contract was discussed, you know, about twenty-five hundred dollars, and then if you guys needed some new equipment, I think it was just kinda left out, that they needed some new equipment, I don't think anybody knew that it was to a point that, uh, maybe it wouldn't be serviced or anything.
And it was already outdated at that time anyway? So it didn't actually fit the previous requirement?
So you said seventeen thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars total?
That'll get us all what we need to be, and we should all be money.
And plus the three thousand?
Plus the contract.
Plus the...
Well, no, seventeen thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars inclusive, that'd be the whole...
Oh, it includes the...
It includes, sorry, it includes the contract.
That's the whole total, yes, sir.
See any more stress from the chair inside?
No, I just think...
You want this placed on the agenda? If there's no objection, we'll place it on the agenda for the next meeting, thank you, sir.